Captain for our 2021 meeting on the planning commission order.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Height?
Yes.
Ms. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Item number. For our agenda. If I. I would ask if I can be given an opportunity to speak to the commissioners, make a court statement at some point in the agenda. I don't know if it requires an amendment to the agenda or if there's a spot for that.
You're all men.
Okay.
You're all men, new business item C.
Okay, I can speak out of it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? What's it called? Your motion is out?
So, Mr. Chairman, so we're doing changes to the agenda received last week to file Island C.
Item C.
You mentioned that there's a new item seven C. Does that really change the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So then perhaps we would make a request to approve the agenda and provide.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded.
Mr. Greenwood?
I don't want to say no because I don't like this stuff to last minute. I'm glad I'm saying.
What?
This just popped up as at the last minute. Nobody got this approved, amended agenda until two seconds ago. I don't like getting stuff in the last minute.
Yeah.
I'm mistaken.
Unfortunately.
Mr. Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Height?
Aye.
Ms. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is reviewing the purpose of the minute.
On page one three, and it's the article eleven. Motion made, fact that there's no person on it. I don't know if that's been changed too. Correct.
Oh, the last one you made is a review. Which one are you talking about?
Item three. There you go.
Who made the second to the. To that motion? Perhaps we check the notes.
I have one. One comment, and this will be on the page three of minutes. The last thing following. Mr. Breeden was thankful to staff. And I'm certainly not sure exactly where it was, but I had noted that information had to be received regarding changes in state code effective July twenty twenty. For solar energy facilities that may allow additional revenue or localizing. Family vitamin request to staff through the legislative legislation to get our current proposed ordinance on large scale solar facilities need to be updated. That needs to be added. Any other changes or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of your comments and that adding whatever they type into the other motion. I thought I had that present.
Your second. Motion made and seconded. You do all comments? If not, Mr. Wagner, double vote.
Ms. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Height?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye. Anyone wishing to speak? I come forward to the microphone. Please individuals who have three minutes or individual comments or five minutes. Only one speaker per group. The next hour of duty, and I'm wishing to speak. Please come forward to the microphone, take your name, and address. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'm looking.
All right, no one wishes to speak, and I'll close the comment room.
One person has their hand raised.
Yes, why?
Is someone would like to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will reopen the comment room.
It appears she has left Zoom. She might have, she might come back, but it was Angela. She just raised her hand in the Zoom, but um. It appears she is gone now. She might be having internet issues, so.
It's hard to hear the chairman with his mask on. It's hard to make out what he's saying.
Hello? Hello? Is somebody there?
It's hard to hear the chairman with his mask on. It's hard to hear what he's saying on Zoom.
Okay.
Is that him?
No, that wasn't.
Anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak?
I'm not seeing anyone.
I'd like to move on the agenda before I would make a comment. I think many of you here are here because of the changes in zoning ordinance. I want to assure you that anyone who has spoken out on the zoning ordinance and wants to get any comments or recommendations, we are listening to those. We do not answer your comments, your personal comments, and the planning commission as a group will make the conversation. Whatever. We do have a number of comments. We will be looking at them. And we will like those changes. Our recommendation will go to the board of directors. We'll be looking at the new schedule here this evening, and you should be getting something out of the public on what that schedule is. Next item on the agenda. I'm going to find for those.
I think we should have the proposals that we have to see. We can have a committee that will be looking over them.
Do we have any information now when we have any comment?
Not at the time.
Not yet. I think it must have been. I would ask all of you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Chairman could be in the floor. If there's again, you just give the testimony, that I have asked that I will not share anything, any proposals till after the words of the name, and also not to be in context in any proposal, not to have any contact with this individual by going through this testimony or who she does.
In that process. So the next item on the agenda is new business.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but we cannot hear you guys. We hear you, but it is not audible. We can't, we can't make out what the discussion is.
Maybe do a test, see if they can hear you.
Okay, the testimony will now. Over the testimony, the testimony group is on.
Hello?
Hello, are you there?
Yes, I cannot hear, I cannot understand anything you guys are saying.
I will try and take into this.
Yeah, I can't either.
Yes, this is, yeah, nothing. It's all muffled.
I'm gonna get Travis up here.
We're working on now. Have you heard me? Have you heard me now?
You need to speak. And say something other than if I can hear you now, because when you speak, it's all muffled, and I can't determine what you're saying and who's speaking.
I can use.
I can't either.
Yes, can you understand what I'm saying?
Maybe you need to take some background, background noise off or something. I don't, I don't know, but it sounds like you're gonna muffle, and we can't hear you and understand what's, what's being said. Can, you can hear me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, the problem is the mask, sir. Are you allowed to take the mask off?
I've got the mask off.
Well, now it sounds better. I can hear, we can hear you.
Okay, speaking to the mic, speaking to the mic.
I've got both of them right in front of me. Thank you. Bobby, would you try again?
All right, can you understand me if I start speaking?
What happened?
It appears when Mr. Greenwood speaks, you can hear, but when the panel speaks, and it shows King William County panel, then you can't hear those that are on that panel, and you can't distinguish who's talking.
Okay, can you understand me?
I can't hear you clearly.
Well, this is Bobby Tassaneri. I'm the county administrator, and I'm going to briefly talk about the Berkeley Group and their involvement in the ordinance revisions. We had originally contracted with the Berkeley Group to be part of the entire process for the ordinance revisions. And so what we are doing is we are going back and revisiting with them where we are at at this point, which as we have a draft ordinance. But what I am recommending is that we take that back to the Berkeley Group, allow them to do a review, because I believe that the last version that they looked at was in May. Is that correct? Yes, in May or April. And so they need time to be able to go back and look at the revisions that have been made and make sure that they can coordinate them and provide a summary and develop a informational sheet for as we move forward. At the same time, they had presented in January of 2020 to the Planning Commission a presentation on the changes that had been made to the ordinances at that point, and also what the next steps were going to be. So I'm asking them while they are revising and reviewing the documents that they also revamp and update that PowerPoint, because it was very informative. I don't know if y'all remember that January was a long time ago, but it was a very, very good PowerPoint, and it's something that I would like the Berkeley Group to use when they go to the public forums that we will be holding later on in the fall. But as part of the Berkeley Group coming on and basically us walking down the lane together from now on, I am proposing that we change a timeline from what we had planned to this meeting is to discuss the Berkeley Group and their scope of services and what we will expect from them. Starting tomorrow through October 5th, the Berkeley Group will then take this draft and do the things that I just spoke about, reacquaint themselves with it, find out what has changed since their last review of it, and also to update the PowerPoint presentation. October 6th, at the next Planning Commission meeting, the Berkeley Group will come back and hand out and have available the cleaned up revised document, incorporating also the public comments that have occurred since then, also having updated the.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I, I, have we been privy to the draft? You're talking, speaking of a draft, have we seen the draft?
The draft.
You talk about moving forward. I didn't, I didn't even know, moving forward on what? On the draft?
On the revision of the ordinances, and the draft is.
We have the, has the. Has the draft ordinance been available and presented?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it has. It is on our website, and it's been out there since June.
Several months. I don't know the exact.
Sometime in early June. We also had a public forum on it last week. So what I'm talking about is the revision of the ordinances.
I have a question. As property.
I'm sorry?
Second, as property owners, we weren't notified, so we didn't know of this change, audience, or anything like that, or that it was available. Had I not been, received a notification via family member and I called the planning committee, then, you know, we had no knowledge of this. So I'm just wondering, how was that communicated to any of the property owners in the King William County?
Well, it's been part of the Planning Commission meetings. It's also been out on our website. It's also been on social media, Facebook. But what I'm discussing now is the opportunity that we are extending to be able to allow your input. So let me finish walking through the timeline that I'm talking about, and then you'll see where you will have ample opportunity to provide your input. So on October 6th, we, they, the Berkeley Group will wrap up the comments and discussion topics and start working with the staff to develop a mass mailing. One of the things that I heard from a young man at the public forum was the fact that he has grandparents that do not have access to the internet, don't use email, don't like social media, and he recommended a mass mailing. So the Berkeley Group and the Planning Department will work together, come up with a concise document that is user-friendly, that provides the major changes that are being recommended, what the current ordinance states, and then what some of the recommendations are by the citizens. This will then be mailed out the last week of October to all property owners in the county. And, and in that mailing also will be the locations, the dates, and the times for four public forums. We want to spread it out throughout the county. We want to make sure that people are able to come to it. We will be doing it via Zoom as well, so that people will be able to participate if they cannot physically be there. So we are going to be scheduling four public forums, and the Berkeley Group will be coordinating that. The Planning Department staff will be there as support, but it will be the Berkeley Group that will be coordinating all of the public outreach. All of that information will then be brought back after we have received more public comments, and then it will be incorporated into the recommendation for the draft. It will be printed, presented back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will then eventually in January have a public hearing, which is a formal opportunity for people to speak at. And then in March or April, the document will be taken to the Board of Supervisors if it is prepared and ready at that time. So what we are doing is adding about seven to eight months to the timeline. There was some understanding that the public had been communicated with better on what we were doing, but what we have found out, especially with the public forum, is that that really wasn't the case. So what we are doing is regrouping. We are going to bring the Berkeley Group in. They are going to orchestrate. We are going to support, and then we will push it out until mid, mid spring, sorry. Does that answer any of your questions? Okay, so I'm going to let the Berkeley Group speak. I believe, is it Kelly Davis? Rebecca?
This is Kelly Davis. Yes, I'm actually going to turn the floor over to Drew Williams, who is our CEO of the company that's here with us today.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that overview, Bobby. Yes, we are definitely committed. We've been working on, on drafting the zoning ordinance that, that you all have. And we are, you know, certainly understanding that we are moving into the public review process of that. And, you know, we certainly want this to be a successful, successful project for the county, for the citizens. It's certainly a paramount importance. And we want to do that the best way we can and chart a path forward. I think we definitely want to make sure that we receive public input in an adequate forum and, and make sure that it is comprehensively received from the community. And we certainly want to do that in the most efficient and effective way that we can, and would like to chart that path forward, working collaboratively with the county to make sure that we do that. However that happens, we certainly need to, need to get some dates on our calendar. We need to start thinking about ways we can, we can move forward with that. But would like to have a discussion about expectations that the Planning Commission might have, that the staff might have in terms of what that looks like. To be quite honest, this is kind of our first time that we've been discussing this in, in a collaborative way. And so we certainly want to come up with a plan that will work for the community, that will work for the county, that will work for the commission, and, and make sure that this gets across the finish line, and you all get the product that you want. But we certainly want to get on the same page with what you all are expecting and how that is going to come to, come to pass. So I'll kind of leave it there and maybe open the floor for discussion, expectations, maybe some things that we should be thinking about as we're trying to chart this course forward and come up with a plan that's going to work for everybody.
Do any of the commission members would like to speak about the scope that they would like to see handled by the Berkeley Group?
My expectation would be that we had an early meeting with Berkeley Group. Can you hear me?
Not very well. Sorry.
This is Don Wagner, Chairman of the Planning Commission. My expectation would be that we, in this process, that we're, the revised process, we would like to have an early meeting with the Berkeley Group and kind of reset our, our working together to finalize this whole document, how we can do that, how we can keep closely in touch. And so, you know, at, at such time as you all feel comfortable with meeting with us, we would certainly like to have that meeting. So if you could just inform us at that time. Anyone else have any?
Drew?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that, and we would be certainly glad to have that discussion. If there are certain things that the commission would like for us to focus on or turn our attention to, we certainly would appreciate that feedback. Are you thinking about having another discussion with the, the commission or with staff in terms of figuring out what that would look like?
With commission and staff.
Commission and staff.
Yes.
Someone on Zoom has a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Carlisa Vessels-Pusy. Again, I was muted, so before the Berkeley representative came on, I wanted to just kind of hear a little bit about who the Berkeley Group is and what is the end goal. You, you guys are kind of talking a little vaguely about the project, and, and I know you said there's details online, but for me, just hearing about this information within the last 24 hours, I don't know a lot about what your plans are. So just to summarize it for some of us who are just getting the information, not familiar with who the Berkeley Group is and what their, their end goal is, and how it's going to affect landowners in King William County.
This is Don Wagner, Chairman. The Berkeley Group is a professional consultant that works with counties and localities to develop comp plans and ordinances and so forth. We hired them well over a year ago. They have been working with us, but due to some issues that we have, we have now reset the process. That information will come, be coming out very soon. It will be online, and I believe it will be. In, how, how are you going, how were we talking about sending that out in this testimony?
The revised schedule is going to be posted on the website first thing tomorrow. But throughout this process, what we're going to do is compile a mass mail out to all property owners so that they can see what the criteria is that we're looking at and be able to respond. And then there will also be public forum locations and dates set up. The Berkeley Group has worked with a lot of rural localities. They have worked with us in supporting our planning and zoning department with personnel that are certified and licensed. They also have pulled together comprehensive plans for localities and towns and cities and worked with many as well on revising their ordinances. So, you know, I realize that you're just hearing about this, but we've been working.
What's the end goal of the Berkeley Group and you guys' goal for?
Our end goal is to revise the ordinances that have not been revised in 10 to 15 years, but to make sure that we take in public comment, to make sure that the ordinances, as they are finally adopted by the Board of Supervisors, is what is what the community and the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors actually wants for the growth of the community.
Okay, so if that is the case, can you tell me? If it's what's best for the community, why was? Why was this information not mailed out? Not everyone is on social media, but you have addresses. You have, you have landowners' information. Why would you not mail out this information? And to me, to proceed in such a way where you're talking with developers and you have them already, you know, kind of in gear on the project, so much so that, you know, you're talking about what they have done, you know, for six months or beyond, and this is such news to us. If that is the case, why would that not be the first thing you all did as a commission who is, you know, supposed to be looking out for the best interest of the landowners in King William County? And I am very concerned myself, and I'm sure I am not the only one that's concerned, because, you know, I don't know all the details. As I said, this is brand new, but from what I've heard, it sounds as if they're, the requirement to build would really hurt those that are low to medium maybe income, who are looking to build on, on their land that has been maybe passed on to them from their ancestors who have told and, and, and lived in, in King William County for years. I know I am almost 60 and I grew up as a little girl on the farm of both my grandfathers in, in King William County, my grandparents. And to hear the, the direction you're going, I don't see how it will benefit the landowners and the children of the landowners. I can hear possibly how it could help those that are wealthy or those that are developers that could make big money.
Excuse me, excuse me, please. This is Don Wagner. I'm Chairman of the Planning Commission. This, tonight is not a public hearing. This is a meeting to reset the direction the Planning Commission is going in. We heard a lot of comments last, last week at a public forum. We are going to respond to all those comments. We will get information out. We understand that a lot of people did not get the information. With the mass mailing, we will be getting that information out. You will have it, and you will have an opportunity to speak at four public forums that we are, will be having. And we would appreciate when you review this information, when you get it. We would appreciate any comments being sent to us in, in writing, or you may have attended any of these public forums. But I want to assure you and everybody in this audience, that the Planning Commission will do their job. What we have done to this point, the ordinances we have sent out, that we have done a draft of, are not set in stone. We are here to listen. We will listen, and we will make changes as we determine to be necessary. And those recommendations for those changes will be made to the Board of Supervisors. I would urge you to wait for this, for the information to get out to you, and then please follow the instructions that you get. And we would be more than happy to talk with you at that time. Thank you. Anything further, Bobby? Let's hear again. Okay, the next item, well, we have already discussed the, I know, well, there was an item on here for discussion of the zoning ordinance revisions. Based on what we have heard tonight, I don't think this is quite the time to have those discussions. We will be working with the Berkeley Group. We will do everything we can to look at all the public comments. We will, and as I have said, we will reset and be certain that the public is involved in this process going forward. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one quick question.
Sure.
With the Berkeley Group on the second page, October, with, the Berkeley Group will be, will be explaining at these meetings, the major and minor points that have been changed in the ordinance, correct? Would Berkeley Group be in a position to help explain some of the rationale behind it? Because a lot of times what I find is people will read something and they don't really understand what's being said. And, and so the Berkeley Group can explain, you know, why this change might be because of the county, whether we want to make that change or not, whether the citizens want to make the change. Sorry. But they could explain the ramifications behind it. You know, why this change, the positives and the minuses of the change being proposed. Is that something that they could do for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Any other comments? Stephen?
I just, like I said, wanted to, it seems to me like Berkeley Group should, should talk to all the people in advance before coming to all of us and figuring this stuff out. But, I mean, that's what everybody's complaining about the last eight, nine, three pages worth of notes of all the citizens that are complaining about, and Berkeley Group with us came up with this already. So, I mean, I don't know what else we're going to do. I mean, if they don't talk to the public first, they're going to talk to us again. They've already talked to us for a year, you know?
We will, we will be meeting with the Berkeley Group, and we will talk with the Berkeley Group, and we will let them know what our desires are to move forward.
That's good.
Bonnie? Any other comments? Okay, next item on the agenda, Commissioner comments. Janie Rhodes had some comments.
I did, and I'm wondering if we need to bring that contraption over here.
All right. Thank you. I hope y'all can hear me in the audience. Good. I'm Janie Rhodes. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm glad to see so many people attending this evening. It's good. And on Zoom, you know, the, it's, it's a little bit difficult with the Zoom because it, there is a process that we have to follow in terms of allowing for the public comment. So we do encourage people to participate when the time is right and the information is out there. But I just wanted to back up, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak and just set the stage about what this is about and what our role as a planning commission is, because I think that there are misunderstandings. And I just think it's important to set the stage. So most people know that the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and we're the individuals that have been so appointed. We all have different reasons probably for wanting to serve on the Planning Commission, and I can assure you it's not to get rich. It's because we have vested interests as residents within the community, and then we have our individual rationale behind the reasons we serve. But whatever our reasons are, it's important to point out that this commission is bound by the ordinances that govern this county, as is the Board of Supervisors and the other county commissions and committees. The county ordinance establishes of parameters in which we must work and charges this commission with certain responsibilities. Among the responsibilities for the commission is to periodically review the pertinent provisions of the ordinances, the zoning district map, as well as the comprehensive plan. In performing these reviews, the commission relies upon the input of appropriate qualified professionals like the Berkeley Group, Council for the County and others, and considers the input of the community. And we've just discussed that. And all of that is to help develop the recommendations. The commission also must consider the purposes for which the ordinances are designed. The zoning ordinance was designed to, among other things, provide for the efficiency and economy in the process of development, provide for convenience of access and of traffic and circulation of people and goods, facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive and harmonious community, protect against overcrowding of land, undue density of population in relation to the community facilities existing or available, and conserve natural resources. These are some of them. It's a public ordinance. You all can look that up. So we have out of those charges that the Planning Commission is responsible for, an ordinance that recognizes the importance of the efficiency and economy and the process of development, as well as the importance of protecting against overcrowding and the preservation of our resources. These are two somewhat competing objectives. So to ensure that the ordinance is designed and drafted to accomplish its own stated objectives, a balance is necessary. Where no one wants to be is for the county to end up somewhere by accident. Where in retrospect, we're all looking back and we're asking, how did this happen? Why did this happen? That is why the law requires a periodic review of the ordinance. This is a proactive approach, which allows for thoughtful development and growth, rather than the alternative approach, which is a reactive response when it is too late and the damage is done. I can think a number of counties, of a number of counties that were not proactive and are suffering as a result of it. In short, it isn't good enough to say, if it isn't broken, don't fix it, or we have always done it this way, so why change? We as a commission have a responsibility to our county and its residents to do better than that. The last wholesale amendment, not just piecemeal, piecemeal changes, was performed in 2005, about 15 years ago. That is why we are going through the process of considering the ordinance, which has been ongoing for over a year now. It has been an arduous process, but one which I've enjoyed working with my fellow commissioners, even when we have differing opinions. And in my personal opinion, our differing opinions result in a better product and result. And I thought it was important to take some time to reiterate to the King William community, the reasons for this important and required work, and the underlying parameters in which the work is to be performed. And I thank my fellow colleagues, commissioners, for indulging me with the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. That's appreciated.
What has a dot?
All right. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I can agree with Ms. Rose. Thank you very much for that. And again, I will also add that comprehensive plan is critically important to get as much involvement as we can. Typically, the ordinances don't affect most folks's database. There are some aspects of it that has a strong number of posts and security out there. But we were not trying to hide in the dark. We were just doing the mundane stuff that my wife finds intensely boring, but for some reason I enjoy. And so we appreciate y'all coming out. We hear you out clear, but there was no intent to hide any of the impact. So thank you, Ms. Chris, for what you said. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. Thanks for your time. This is right for your.
Stephen? And I echo all, all those comments. Yeah, I think the next item we have is the staff or special committee reports. Do you have anything? Have all that? Okay, so we, we have the zoning logs and so forth. Okay, good. Anybody have any comments on the logs and reports? If not, do we have any closing comments, Janie?
Thank you, everyone.
Stephen?
Thanks, everybody, for coming. I was hoping maybe more people would speak, ask people to show up, because, so they can let all the planning commission know some of the items that people were concerned about. But I guess maybe if we got them all at the last, we've got comments printed up for most people, unlike, we don't have like four public meetings. So show up at some of those with Berkeley Group, and hopefully we'll get all this ironed out and redraw it to the Planning Commission so that they can bring.